Gentlemen, if you're not here, I'm asking that no ears.
(laughing)
Yes, I mean, we, uh, we see the zipper down there. I have a question for you. It's all situations in there. Covid forces. That's a ring. I think I'm right there. I think I'm right there. Yeah, that's why I'm here. Last of the guests. Your list differs greatly between this and the other. By like four, like what? Yours is eight states. They said that two states.
You guys can imagine. I'm great. Clearly, I'm very good. But, uh, yeah. Canada.
We're ready? All right. We'll, uh, we'll call the order, our meeting for, uh, Monday, August 20th, 2018. Uh, first up, we have a presentation from SCAN with Ms. Penne Foley. And, uh, Ms. Prowl, do you want to give us a little intro or a little background on this, if any chance, or?
Sure. A group of local artists, including the new Electric Street Barn and a number of people. Heather from Create, Heather Hutchinson from Create, Penne Foley, who's a wonderful, um, fiber artist, have been meeting regularly and have been joining them when they can. And, uh, what they've put in place is of collecting some art at various community events. Uh, if they're looking to, in phase two, make some, possibly some public art, um, projects around the city. So it seems like a natural time for them to come and talk to the council, tell them what they might, uh, be looking for as far as partnership, where the city goes. It just, you know, kind of raise the base awareness to the pockets that they've been looking on, so.
Very good.
But that will turn it over.
Thank you. Ms. Foley, I'll give you the microphone there. And, you know, well, you're very good. Good seeing you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Ed. Okay, I'm going to put all my stuff down here, and I'm going to pass out a folder for each of you, so if you want to just take one and pass it along. Um, okay, so, the project that, well, briefly, like Lisa mentioned, uh, Heather and I got together last summer, and we talked about, um, the need for public sculpture, or public art in Schenectady. And so we gathered together a few people involved in the city, uh, involved in the arts, uh, to think about how we could begin to develop some public art projects in the city of Schenectady. And after hashing it out for a while, we came up with the idea that wouldn't it be neat if members of the community could actually be part of creating the public artworks? So, um, we came up with a project called Schenectady and Me, where we decided to reach out to, um, as many folks as we could from all the different neighborhoods through the fairs, uh, going to different events in the city, going to neighborhood picnics, um, the Green Market, to, um, ask people to think about, um, Schenectady and what they loved about Schenectady. And, which is why the project's called Schenectady and Me. So, we created a fairly simple project where we instruct people in how to create a collage using paper and glue and scissors. And you, tonight, are lucky enough to each get one of these packets for creating a collage.
So. It's really my fault. No one's to blame.
I had no chance.
Sorry.
I didn't have to play Pictionary or anything.
No, no, no. You know.
You don't have to draw.
There is, there is no drawing about. And granted, some of the samples that we brought tonight, if you want to just take one of these, yes. Um, some of the samples tonight were done by people who did have a drawing lesson or two. But we've collected over 200 samples from people who never had a drawing lesson. And I'm, I'm an artist. I've been an art teacher. I have struggled with people, you know, most of my life, trying to convince them that, yes, they can use paper and glue and scissors and create something that's pretty neat and pretty cool. It can be abstract. It can be realistic. So anyway, we reached out to many people so far, and we're going to continue. Um, I think it's Wednesday night, and I'll be at the Woodlawn Picnic, and I will be setting up tent and a table and asking people to think about what they love about Schenectady. So we have gotten collages that range from City Hall, that's the salon, to Moretz. In fact, the school, the high school, Jackson Gardens, the library. So we're getting a lot of different collages, some, like I say, are abstract, some are a little more realistic. I offer some instruction in how to use scissors, how to use glue, how to use a marker, and I tell you, every one of these is fabulous. So, once we have the collages, Silver Graphics up on Albany Street, I don't know if you're almost, you're aware, Silver Graphics, yeah, they were, they're in, um, the same building that Seth Hewson is in, I think. Um, Betty Dufrayden there is also on our committee, and she's taking every one of these pieces of artwork and scanning them. She puts them up online so that anyone can go see these pieces of artwork. And in the end, what we're hoping to do is create ceramic tiles from all of the work. And we have some samples made. Unfortunately, all I have is one tonight of City Hall and the Green Market. Um, if we can pass this around. So the idea is we will create a tile from every one of these, um, collages. We've received funding from the New York State Council on the Arts through the Art Center for the first phase of this project, which is to go out with the community, to talk about it, um, to, uh, get the supplies, you know, get the whole thing rolling. So we've gotten our initial grant, which will get us through until, um, March. What we hope to do beginning of the year is to have several art shows where we display all the work and get the community to come in and talk about what we can do with this work as far as creating a piece of public sculpture in each of the city parks. So what I put together here, the, um, piece that's in front of you, and if any of you want this, email to you, I can also email it, is a, um, a brief description of what the goals of this project are, um, what it can do as far as bringing communities together. And, I mean, you all know that arts can help bring communities together. And, um, the next phase, what we're hoping to do is to raise the money to create our first piece of public sculpture. That could be a very simple park bench, say, a U-shaped park bench. It could be a very interesting park bench with some neat sculptural forms to it. It could be a, um, a tile wall. And we're hoping that if we can get the funds to continue this project, that the city would be willing to allow us to donate the project to the various city parks. Um, I've kind of laid out most of this in there. I, um, some of you know Tony Ward. I've been in contact with Tony, and we've talked about the feasibility of this and the costs, so there are some, you know, I've got a sheet in there that talks a little bit about the costs and, um, you know, the different options we would have. We could do something out of cement. We could do something out of wood with cement board overlay and the tiles on it. Um, Heather's with Create, and Heather has talked about Create being able to keep these up, if you, you know, if there's concern about the upkeep of the, if we create a tile bench in the park. Um, so, have I left something else?
So that's your main, main point.
Yeah, um, and, and even if, um, it doesn't go all the way to fruition, to fruition, so far, this has been a pretty cool project. Just going out to the community, getting people to think about what they love about this city. And, and some of the pieces that we've got have been amazing. I talked to one little boy at the Green Market, and this was pretty neat. He looked around and he said, "Well, I've been li- I lived here, but I've been living in South Carolina." And he's looking around, and he started a collage, and he said to him, "So what are you doing?" He said, "Well, where I live," it looked like the tops of the buildings, you know, on J Street. That's what he was collaging, just the tops of the buildings. He said, "Where I live, all the tops of the buildings are just flat, and these are very interesting." Now, that's something that I never would have thought of doing a collage of. Or, I mean, I rarely look up the tops of the buildings in Schenectady. But, so this is something that he loved about Schenectady. You know, some people have done simple collages about the tree in their backyard, um, the store down the street, the little bodega on the corner. So, you know, even if we don't get, you know, a, a piece of sculpture in every park, at least it's, you know, help bring people together to think about Schenectady. But that's why we're here, to talk to you about the feasibility of us donating a piece and the city allowing it to be in the park.
And perhaps some, uh, in-kind labor value.
Just to install it, yeah.
You want to make sure everything is up to the city goals.
Yeah, but we really can't go any farther as far as, you know, writing grants or looking for funding for this unless we have the okay from the city that, yes, this sounds like a good idea, you know, with the city's guidance and the neighborhood guidance. I mean, we are talking to community leaders in the neighborhood too. Um, I'm talking to Spiro over in, who's a great guy, um, about the ideas. So we really want to get, we really don't want to be artists or just, you know, random community folks who say, "Oh, let's put a piece of sculpture here, there, and there," place without buy-in and without people having some enthusiasm, because also, if there's enthusiasm, neighborhoods buy into it, well, the neighborhoods are going to keep it up, we hope. So.
Any questions, follow up, Ms. Prowl?
Um, I just, it's good to look at the list of places that they've been to, because I think it's very inclusive as far as all the different neighborhoods and groups of people in Schenectady. Um, and then I would also request for your consideration that in two weeks, under government operations, we do a ceremony of us, or, excuse me, resolutions to support the project. Uh, give a couple of weeks for the council to ask questions or kind of roll this over or whatever the case may be, but I think that would give the group the support that they need, um, you know, to go forward with grants. And just to clarify once again, um, I know that whatever, wherever you want to install, you'll be talking to the neighborhood and the neighborhood leaders, um, to make sure you have their buy-in. And I believe all you're asking from the city is possibly some in-kind labor and us funding for it.
That's correct.
Not asking for any money.
No, we aren't asking for any money, though if anyone knows of any grants, I'll give you my email address.
Well, and we, you know, we will be starting a fairly substantial fundraising campaign, obviously, the certified test, reaching out to the business community and that sort of thing as well, so.
And you're working with our media to raise the awareness of the project.
Right.
Yeah, like you say, he's, I mean, one of the big ones.
Yes, but now, media's got some pretty exciting ideas. Yeah, um, yeah, and we've, we've already drafted letters to send out to businesses and to members of the community for support, but we didn't want to let, we didn't want to go any farther until we've gone through this.
Yeah, and one, one grant that comes about immediately is the county SIF grants. I think I talked to you about that.
Yep.
Uh, that's all with the arts and music and that, and I think that'd be, and I'll give you Joe McQueen's contact right now, and I think that's, and again, those applications are in January, I think, about, and the awarding is in April.
Oh, perfect.
So the time is, is really nice. So.
Do you have any questions?
I just have a question concerning fundraising. Are you a five-year-old senior graduate? Have you done that?
The, um, SCAN, we sort of formed as a, like a grassroots organization amongst many different organizations. The Create Media Studios, we honor five-year-olds in creation, that's, so we're the fiscal sponsor for the, um, the Council on the Arts.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions, thoughts? Mr. Mayor, you're all supportive, I would say. I agree with you. Sounds like a great idea. Sure has support from us, so, uh, we'll put it on for resolution in two weeks, right? And we'll have you comment, and, except that, and then we'll continue to get the publicity. And you work with the schools on the ceiling as well?
We, um, we will be working with the schools, yes, once school starts again.
We've had a lot of kids already participated in workshops over the past.
Yeah, and, and actually, um, high school kids work with Heather through Create, volunteering for some of our events, and also at the Green Market, we're working with high schools.
Oh, actually, very good.
Yeah, we've got a lot of volunteers on board.
So if any of you in the council has any questions over the next couple of weeks or concerns, I know, Ed, Ed, you have way of contacting, and I have a way of contacting, so, you know, just, I wonder.
I can just sort of leave you out to all of us, all the council members here, along with, uh, that's, um, contact information. And of course, for those who don't know, Penne Foley, her husband John is the president of the Board of Education, uh, and of course, she's a retired teacher as well, so.
I, I said that I'm retired, but I don't.
You're not. Why not go on, right?
I don't think I'm that.
Always riding your bikes, too. Your guys are always, your folks are always on there, so.
Yes.
All right, some more for the questions?
We're good?
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
And there's the contact for Joe McQueen.
And, um, please, open these packets. Think about what you like about this city.
Return them on Wednesday to the park, Woodlawn Park.
Oh, yeah.
That'd be a great place to stop over, right?
Yep. And everyone has a folder?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. All righty. So we're going to administrative efficiency, I'll call that command order. We have the affirmative action quarterly reports, and Mr. Gardner, we're ready for your presentations, sir. There you go. Thank you.
Good afternoon, uh, good evening, and I want to thank you again for what I've been talking about, uh, some of the things that we got going on here in the city as relates to the affirmative action and our program. Um, before I get started, you know, just in a quick summary, um, you see that, you know, we, we've talked a little bit about where we are with the, the new hirees and, um, what's been happening since, since January on the, um, uh, on, on the first page there. And also, um, there's a, there's a quick summary in terms of the, um, the status of the projects, the construction projects that's going on in the city or that's being administered by the city. Uh, at, at the bottom, you'll notice that, uh, several of them have been closed out for this year, you know, so those numbers reflect it, you know, on the, uh, on the next page there, but, you know, these items have been closed out, and we're, um, we're moving, um, you know, we're moving forward with that. To, uh, to the, to the employment component, uh, from January through, uh, through August of this year, we've had approximately, uh, 31 new hirees in the city. And, um, and that, that's in the city at large, separate from the, the police department. 21 of those, as you can see, you know, you break it down, it's 21 are white, one Hispanic, four blacks, and two Asians, three white females. Um, the postings, you know, for all opportunities are still, you know, done, you know, via the website, uh, community outreach, uh, emails, you know, when we can, and, um, and any other, you know, you know, modem of getting information out as we can. The police department had a very successful recruitment campaign for the upcoming exam. Um, I believe they, uh, there were 306 applicants for that. 222 of those were accepted, and I think with 82 were disapproved, um, you know, for a variety of reasons. And two of them were in question, I guess, I would just say, on, um, on a consent, you know, on a consent basis, that there was an issue that they're trying to get resolved, so if that can be resolved, those two would, uh, come back on. But, uh, but overall, that, that was a very successful program, and, um, there was a lot of outreach, a lot of efforts. They went around in terms of trying to, you know, get the word out and, you know, get folks engaged, so I think we should be, um, you know, very happy with, um, what's happening with their, and their efforts. So, so obviously, we got to turn our attention, you know, to other departments, you know, you know, the fire department, we got to try to do more, you know, things along these lines and, and, and the like, but, um, I, I think this is a good template in terms of where we can look at, in terms of where we can go if we really want to put the effort into it to really make it happen. Um, the, the other point I wanted to get across was, we had a very successful launch of our, uh, Economic Opportunity Program, and it dealt with two things. It dealt with employability of getting folks introduced to the construction industry and talking about the opportunities in the industry. And the next thing it did was try to pair those, or match those up with small and emerging firms that are looking to hire folks. So, so we had two component, uh, simultaneous, uh, training program that's going on. We just finished the first part of it, where we, the goal was to have 15 students, uh, in one that we just completed, and, uh, we had, um, 20, 21 students, I believe, enrolled. We had 15 actually complete the program, and, uh, three, three did not, uh, three did not make it. But it was a very successful program in that we were able to complete some jobs. We have folks that are actually out there, fully engaged and working. We had four, uh, people get into the carpentry as a pre-apprentice, uh, training program, so they're actually employed there. We had another young lady that got into the, um, the DC9 as an apprentice, and we have four people working with, uh, local contractors. And, and one thing that we should all be proud of, one of the young men that went through the program is now working on our street paving program with, uh, with Empire Paving, so that was, that was a big success, I think. I think we should be very, very happy with that, and especially with the young man that's involved. You know, we're very, very proud of his diligence and, and aptitude to continue on to make it happen. So, with that, in the next section, um, as you're aware, back in, um, June, or last month, we went down to Dallas as part of, um, the HURT, uh, annual training, um, and conference down in Dallas, Texas, and, uh, we were one of the four presenters from across the country to present on our training program and our initiative here in the city, and what were we doing to create economic opportunities and jobs, and, and how do we bring it all together? So, out of the four entities that were there, we, the city of Schenectady represented New York State. We had, uh, people from Chicago, what's the next one, Seattle, Washington, and, uh, Dallas, Texas. So we all presented, and, and we did very well. We were recognized as having the best, um, training and outreach Section III, uh, program for, for municipality. So, you know, so we're very, very proud of that. And the thing that made ours different was the relationship between what we have with the city and our partners. In other words, you know, we did a lot of work with the SUNY system, partnered with Schenectady Community College, the private sector, and, and some of the private universities and things around the, you know, around the city, so, so that was sort of like really what tied us together. And also the fact that we were able to bring firms into our training program to actually meet with the, with the students one-on-one and talk about real, live opportunities. So, you know, so the employer would come in and tell their story, and they would say, "If you want an opportunity with me, you get your skill set up, you're going to have a job." And, and that has gone, you know, full circle. It, it is becoming true, you know, that is happening. But the challenge is, there's a lot of work to be done in this area, and we're going to need the city, or this council, really, to help us put forth some efforts to, you know, to make some things happen as we create opportunities for firms and people. The, the big thing we have to do is, we have to build the capacity of the, the number of businesses and the number of firms that we have here so they can ultimately do some of the hiring that we need done. And I'll give you an example of one of the barriers that we're, um, constantly up against. Uh, we had a young man that bitted on a, um, construction project, I believe it was last week, and he was the parent, you know, successful, I mean, he was a parent low bidder. He, he was capable of doing the work, he had the resources in place, but because we have this cap in place of $200,000, he, he would be disqualified. And that's a, that's a huge barrier for, for all the small businesses, not just minority and women, but just any small business. It's a huge barrier. So, so I'm asking, we, we're trying to put a proposal together to ask the city to consider raising that cap or raising that, that, that ceiling up to like a million dollars, so that you can build more firms coming into the pool and being able to compete and bid on some of these opportunities. It's been an ongoing problem for the city, you know, forever, and, and it's always the same issue, so it's not whether it's a minority or non-minority, whatever, it's, it's just a small business that cannot compete, that cannot get these apprenticeship programs, you know, so they can, you make it happen. Even if they got the money to, to do it, Department of Labor is not allowing any more of these firms, so it's, it's an absolute barrier, you know, to small firms that happen to hit us the hardest. And I think as a city, we would do better because we would have more firms in the pipeline and more firms in the pool to help compete with this and, you know, to really, you know, make a difference. Along that line, as we work to develop and cultivate more businesses, we'll continue to span what our partners, you know, for example, we're now in talk with the SUNY administration, you know, uh, you know, the statewide part of SUNY, where they're interested in partnering with us and, and having more involvement with Schenectady Community College and Hudson Valley as we start developing the businesses. Because right now, our training program has been exclusively outside of the city, you know, with all private partners. And they want to step in and see if they can help bring all of those type of resources that they have into fold and, and have more classes and things like Schenectady Community College, and have more of an active engagement to really enhance the training that we're able to give these folks in terms of how to run the business and how to be successful and how do we tie it all together? Because, again, it's all about, it's all about the numbers. If we can, you know, increase more, you know, opportunities for firms and, you know, more projects to bid on, you know, the more successful we are going to be. And then the final thing that we're doing is being more actively engaged with the private developers. So all that development that you see going on down on State Street and all throughout the city, we're actually approaching developers and asking them to partner with us in terms of what they're trying to do to, you know, be a little bit more diverse, you know, and if they're having challenges, meeting, you know, those types of objectives, and what can we do to help? So by doing that, we're, we're only expanding the pool of resources we have for, ultimately for our constituents to go and look for a job. We're just saying that we got folks that we're working with, that we're training, we're developing, and can you consider opening up an opportunity for them to compete, you know, on, uh, on, on a broader base? And the final thing I wanted to suggest, to just put it out there, is for you to consider, as you start putting out, uh, as we put out projects, for example, like the street paving project, is it possible for us to look at something like the CD portion of the, uh, of, of the money that goes in there and have it, and break those contracts down or break those bid packages down so that smaller firms can compete? You know, you know, why, why have it all in one big three or four million dollar package if you can break a piece out where smaller firms can, uh, compete? Again, we would, uh, diversify our pool, we would create the number of folks that can ultimately participate in that, and, um, and, and I think it would create a lot of positive, you know, it's, uh, you know, excitement, so. So that's my, that's my plea.
Questions of, uh, Mr. Gardner, Ms. Fordville?
Uh, it seems like the Economic Opportunity Program is only speaking about, so that's good. I know I did visit the class once, and, uh, and what I hear about it, I'm glad that people are very excited about what's going on, so, um, congratulations on that. Uh, I still have a question on, um, where you're talking about, where you summarized the prime contacts that were, that were awarded by the city, that only less than 1% of the boards are MWD. So is there something we can do to increase that number?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what I'm talking about. Number one, if we can, if we can raise that, that cap, you know, raise the ceiling, that's one thing. Number two, in areas where we can raise the packages up, it's a bit more work. We would, we would, you know, I've mentioned this thing, you know, you know, several hundred times, you know, about having the opportunity, because now, you know, you know, the beans are there, you know? I, I think in most cases, you know, finding is a challenge, but it's not a disparity, but, you know, those are some real live, you know, scenarios, and, uh, you know, if that folks are ready to work and ready to do it, if these are some things that the city can do, definitely, you know, raise the factors up so that more firms can compete, take, take consideration, look at that, uh, cap, that's what I'm asking.
So with the piece of action on those things, that would improve that number?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, I've got a couple of questions, um, in regard to the police department, the applicants. Did we have a breakdown of the efficacy of the individuals?
Is it down that David, David finished today?
I have not received it yet.
If we can get that, and then also the breakdown of city and non-city applicants as well. Uh, I'm very interested in seeing, you know, where these folks are coming from, and how we're dealing with good enough recruiting job within the city limits to encourage our residents here.
Yeah, there was a good.
So if I can take a look at those numbers. So if I can take a look at those numbers. And then the recruiting through program, is that ongoing around or is there like certain time frames that your program is beginning? Or how does, if we have individuals might be interested, just contact your office or?
It's ongoing and hoping that all applications are being accepted through the city career council. So they will do that, you know, any day. Okay. And we're doing a, you know, pretty thorough, you know, screening process because we want to get it right and we want to, you know.
Absolutely. And again, I'm sure some of the other folks here, I'm very, very impressed with your reporting and what you've been doing uh for the city and of course our residents as well. The reporting here is just in depth and very proud of you uh for, for, for the initiative and getting going out and representing not only the city but the state. Uh, just a fine tribute to what you're doing, what your office is doing, although you're staffed one.
Yeah, and one other thing, I've got a couple of, I've got a couple of coworkers. So they're gonna give me a couple of interns this fall towards, what I want to do is specifically the task is going to be to do a, a real true endeavor study of, of the city and the diversity and, you know, the impact of, you know, those type of things. We want to look to see uh what we do to sort of justify, you know, the government and as things go to increasing the one I have.
Very, very good. Anybody else? No, seeing none again. Thank you very, very much. I appreciate all the work you did. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Uh, anything else to come up before committee, if you see none, the motion of Jerry Carr, second amendment, Paul Manel, there's C I. Thank you. We're adjourned.
Call to our public safety. First item is the police traffic service program.
Um, firstly, I'd like to thank Iran, Iran. I just want to thank you for all your preparation and help on, on recruiting. It's a, it's a ongoing process. And we recognize that's police department just can't live here in Europe where it's kind of passed me every year.
I've had a lot of meetings with Iran and try to change their, change their strategy, but I'll push that a lot, so.
First item is Governor Traffic Safety. Uh, we received a, a award of thirty-two thousand two hundred dollars from the Governor Traffic Safety Committee. And again, this is for um vehicle enforcement, patrol enforcement. And as you can see, as, as the breakdown in budget, as I sound to you, some of this specialized receive well specifically enforcement. Some of the, our state days that they have, sometimes they coordinate with the whole state, you know, the concerted enforcement, we're towards that. And then our regular enforcement is that we can choose of, they have some guidelines that they bring themselves on one of the force, they've earned four hundred dollars of, of other personal services. So we need some equipment, um, out of sense or whatever that may be for, for enforcement. So any questions? No matching, no matching. No, no matching dollars in this grant. This is um, certainly an overtime for both parts, Grant.
Um, except that enforcement would be scaled on the traffic division. Uh, so I mean, how does that determine? Because I, I hear a lot of people saying, you know, in various areas throughout the city that people are speeding down the street uh all the time. So how does that determine?
We do a lot of it by accidents, quite frankly. No, but we do receive it, might as well receive it, might as well argument and traffic, which you keep track of. A lot of it is we have a D D accident of uh, which is a software formula that kind of gives us hotspots where the accidents are and where all the crimes are occurring. We use a lot of our, our accident data drive, um, red, it might be red light zone, some ways you go, you know, sit on red light, you know, see the speed, you know, front of speed, you know, burning red lights, passive accidents there. Some of it neighborhood based. If we have a lot of neighborhood based, though, we do just deploy some of our, our radar equipment, our, our signs. Um, because it's hard to set up some of the neighbors, right? Frankly, if you're trying to sell their exposure, we'll do best we can to explore the neighbors. So we do take the consideration.
Any other questions? Any other motion on the favor of your next item, state and municipal facility program, right?
Yeah, no, no, I know, it's just, um, sorry. Um, this one, Senator, or some of them, Senator Barrows office, began to work on the top of it past year. Um, Chief Rechak told him simply the, uh, get grants through his office because we know the municipality post by that actually received a similar grant a few years back. Um, doing that, it feels quite a process, obviously, like a process, but we secured that four hundred thousand dollars. We first, basically we, we do our, our range, our just range zone based from the police department. Some along with our, our, our ranges are not really been operational for the past couple of years. And even in that, it was kind of only two lanes available to us. We anticipate right now six to seven lanes down in a, in a state of the art of, of facility with this money. Um, there's no match by the city. Um, we did get some budgetary estimates going into this grant to make sure we had enough money. How we feel we do, um, because it's going to suffice for everything. Um, and there's some great neat technologies now out there for law enforcement to train in. And this sheet, don't shoot type of requirement, um, as well as low light and, and, you know, target recognition. And there's a lot of things like put out there that, you know, we're looking at to have in some, for most state of the arts, because of this arrangement in the capital district. So thanks to some of this, uh, laws.
Any questions? Any other motion on the favor of next item, if they were wanting, or part of Justice, not the right, I'm not sure if that's on the needs here.
This is an annual grant we get, we receive. And there's a formal award that the state distributes uh funding to different counties, all counties across the state. Um, this is one we share with the DA's office and there's a set amount. It's something we apply for. We actually have to put our application and after they tell us how much we're gonna get. And we've broken down and every year, for the past number of years, we have basically split the pan, uh, split the um, the pie with the DA's office. This year we got the extra dollar. I think last year they got the extra dollar. So we, I made sure that we got the extra dollars, not the three dollar counts. Um, but we want to use it for our training and I, I, I put down kind of technology and this over with our training, training facility or training unit. However, we want to, I, I don't, I sit here not knowing exactly what we're applying, you know, we want to kind of, we really embrace law enforcement, online training, um, both from an app standpoint and as well as, as computers. It's, it's really saves us tons of money to bring officers in, we can allow, you know, X amount, I mean, thirty minutes on the shift or fifty minutes on the shift. And so we're not really advanced at that type of training. We get more daily training out of it. So this, this money here, we use for some of those lines, where we can take some technology, embrace some technology and or other software packages that's out there and um incorporate it with global target to produce. Again, there's, there's no match on this money here.
Yep.
You guys just remembered, so I can back point in time, remember?
No match.
That's foreshadowing.
Any questions? On the favor? Uh, next item was speed limit signage and lights around schools.
This was actually a JAG grant from two thousand seventeen and, and again, shortly we receive these grants and we take this money. Last year we came to court city council and proposed personally these, these speed signs in a sign board around schools that the three, three speed signs. And then bigger sign board that we, we access scenes that they have crowds downtown or even some streets or bigger for streets. The way grants work is we go before the city council, we get approval, send it back, send a vote application and, and usually it's in a term of time of two to four months. This one for some reason it lapsed for a long period of time. We actually just received notification of the grant a week before the new round came out. So we, we um, have already ordered the speed signs anticipation of school here. Uh, we're probably given for a period of time, I'm anticipating four to six weeks. But we also have been contacted with our traffic unit. We make sure that we have two that we can deploy already. So the idea is we start the first day of school, we start recording them in some of these neighborhoods, some of these side streets that you wouldn't normally, you know, see, see a speed sign and just to bring awareness to the, to the people that drive around the streets, especially beginning of the school.
Yeah, and as well, I sent the email to folks last week. It's very important, um, you know, last year when we approved it, that we had contacts from several local PTOs and some parents around regarding the, the speeding and, and especially online physical because that just had opened last year. Uh, but it's good to hear that, you know, we've got these on order and put them out there. And I think it's just important to say to our students as well, uh, you know, to have them out there. But I can just touch you, what are, how are we with crossing guards? Are we still waiting for that? Is those positions still?
We have no openings at this point. We actually have, we have, we have good things, but we still like to reserve. So there's a couple of people out there that are interested. We still have um, pillars. So we, we never had enough as far as I'm concerned, but you know, people can save the common sense. Right now there's nineteen posts, we have nineteen people, four of them posts. Um, I, we may do that one or two reserve. Um, and then, but if there are people out there interested in it.
I don't know. We have sometimes a parking enforcement officer, it's like Ontario and Broadway. And then Willie comes in the afternoon, is that one of the people?
Yes, yes, as a partner, I got to tell you the truth, he doesn't get there on time.
No, can he morning, supposed to be there at seven fifteen and he's not there?
Well, the parking, they don't start till eight o'clock in the morning, somewhere in the days, you know, some of the parking.
Okay, well, well, I'm saying is that partner isn't covered at the proper time?
Right now we have nineteen assigned posts within the city and we, we have personnel pillows, so if they should be filled, so should be filled. But, you know, so it's, it's tough sometimes because weather dictates lots of time. People crossing the guards coming out. And then, so we need to, to people by time, sometimes by now, it might be fifteen minutes, half hour later. We have traffic personnel coming early in the morning to cover exactly what you're talking about and make sure that everything's covered. So I'm not saying there's not lapses, but at least we, uh, we're making effort now with full staff and full complement. Because anytime we use parking, person takes away from our revenue. So we had, you know, kind of, I shouldn't say that.
Well, we're talking about person, so.
No, 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 absolutely. Oh, that's right, that's what we be playing there.
And I'd like to see that post covered at seven fifteen, most posts, because of one kid, Ontario and Broadway. I'm gonna take my walk and with that series and I know.
I give you a sign.
Twenty after, twenty-five after.
Yeah, you give you a sign.
We'll let the guard.
They're just one of the great thing.
Remember we did that as kids? You remember when we crossed the guards as kids? We had the badge and everything like that. Yeah, I remember that as kids.
Unfortunately, we got, some kids got that.
Well, we all did. I think we all did, that's right.
Can we, I know what the, um, the schedules, they came out, the guards have to pick them up. Some guards are computer driven. Can we get that in a format so it can be emailed to them?
Oh, I'm sure we can. I'm sure we can.
For next year?
Again, that.
If I was having to pick it up today, that's fine.
If they haven't, I'll, I'll talk to them. I'll make those systems, you know, but it's, it's, um, you know, yes, absolutely. But against a lot of the crossing guards are older people and they don't have the ability to email and stuff.
For those that are.
We can, um, obviously accommodate, that, that's easy for us, like on things. Try to safely treat as possible.
Lights around the school? Are they, are they upgrading it, get the existing lights or adding new lights? I'm just curious. And it says, um, speed limit signage and lights around the school.
The master?
Yeah, from the.
I don't remember the lights part.
Yeah. What about the signs? The, the speed of the sign, that's my question, is all the speed of the signs.
But there's no, there's no additional lights needed or?
Not that I'm aware of. That would be something that fell under this grant because I remember, um, asking for it, my, my paperwork doesn't show that for later part. Um, I received a, you know, a, coming tonight for, for this purpose. Um, I, I wasn't sure about what, what we're talking about with the lights.
I just care.
Yeah, you'll just, you'll just say.
Obviously knows our, our traffic signal lights that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And I just.
Are they all out, are they deployed or?
I will make my little traffic list right here when I, when I.
I'm just thinking around.
I, I actually welcome any emails, emails you go to the streets. If you're, if you're special at the school starting, please email me and I'll, I'll, I'll pass it on. I'll, I'll just direct it obviously to our traffic, so forth. We also have, um, we recognize early in the morning, some of the forces from some of the school plus the work, some. Make sure that, you know, in the mornings, especially early on, um, in SUNY or the way to get out there and do it randomly at some times of the first couple of weeks. And then, you know, follow us around or sometimes we can put all sorts of pulses in the way of it and so.
That's a good idea.
That was my idea.
Very good. Very good.
Next item is a call for public hearing. And I please, I will take leave. And this, you are?
Hi. So this is to, um, to a call for public hearing. It should say Public Safety Foundation, I apologize. So it's gonna be similar to the police athletic way it was, but this is entirely new foundation. They should have all the parameters available to everyone one day.
Yes, I think please email it to us. Any question? I have a motion. On the favor? Thank you. Next item is the appointments of civilian police review board.
Uh, submitted to you, the names of individuals have been submitted by various groups that are outlined in the legislation. The resumes are all attached, most of which individuals you know would ask their available consideration.
Question? I'm sorry.
Please, are all appointments for, um, positions that where people have timed out? It's nobody who would actually be available to have another, uh, another appointment to the review board that will be placing?
I can't say that, but somebody may have stepped down.
But we're not replacing somebody who could have another term if they chose to.
That's what you're not, it's the groups that make the recommendations.
So it's not the city council or yours? Could they know you have one, we have one?
Correct. These are all respective.
I think it's from the various agencies. They have some speech, the U rights commission and the municipal authority.
So, um, so does this complete the board now full of these appointments?
Yes.
Yeah, I went to the meeting on Tuesday, that this, they were the three shorts, so they're this.
Can I have a motion to move these, uh, agreements? On the favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item is the final review of the inventing chapter two twenty-eight regarding streets and sidewalk. This has been failing the arts. We had a public hearing last Monday and much of that happy of the whole uh recognition. Of our professionals, comments.
So we had talked about some, uh, I can share responsibility on the part of the, um, contractor as well as the homeowner. See that change?
Section C? First, is this doing the work?
Submitting the plans.
Right.
So it doesn't mean necessarily that's gonna be the homeowner, but it could be the contractor.
The chair would be opposed to outdoor process, it's just the contractor. No question.
It was the owner or contractor here, is what you said? You have the war contractor?
Person. I said sometimes if you have family members doing it, it might not be the owner of the building. So if anybody go ahead and, but the person doing the work, the family, you somewhat differently, they might not, you didn't pay, might be volunteer. When you have a paid contractor coming in and doing the work, they clearly should be, or we should have the ability to hold them responsible for ensuring that a permit is applied for and appropriately received.
So, my concern is later in the paragraph, because it says that the cost of said workshop charged against the abutting owner as municipal fee, or the cost will be added to the taxable as an assessment to be levied as a special tax against the abutting landowner, or the cost may be recovered in a lawsuit against said abutting owner. So it's still, the, the cost issue still falls only on the owner. And I thought what we had talked about, and what we had talked about, uh, two weeks ago also, was having some cost fall on the responsibility of the contractor, whether that's via a fine, or, uh, part of the cost to the homeowner, sharing the cost with the homeowner, or whatever that case may be, um, is what I was referring to a couple of weeks ago that we talked about. And I don't see any change in that yet.
I would agree with that, to the, they should, that would be issued, is corporate.
Yeah, that is correct.
I think, I don't understand the charge of abutting property.
Neither.
At ten surfer to.
Kind of a bookstore, right.
Properties opposed to property that's actually being worked on.
Right, yes.
We got those changes.
I believe they were already, the changes I had were already melted out. But I can be, it seems like an old.
Yeah, I am, I am now, this is not the right topic, but, I did actually, sorry, I'm trying to catch up to this. The, the new version was emailed. I think everybody, um, sent a lot of apartments.
Can you send it again?
Yeah.
I am actually, sorry, I'm gonna send it to the entire council, revised copy, and we'll talk about that. Okay, it captures the information that you had asked for in this version here. That's why I'm burying my head, trying to look at your chart, and then sort of, it's not here. So we'll report back to the last revised copy.
Go ahead.
And have it sent to the council. We did have all the concerns added. Mr. Iggy.
This is good from this point forward, but again, when people don't pull it from this, where the problem comes in. And then we go back to the law department, that has our time, even though it's freshly paid, that they can be set as grand found, then, or whatever. That's where we have the problem, I still can't get my arms around why we can't hold somebody responsible for doing a job without a permit. And I don't see how this covers that. It's when somebody gets a permit and doesn't buy by the rules, what I'm getting out of this. What happens when they don't get a permit and don't buy by the rules? How do we cover that?
I propose scenarios, which I believe are being followed internally. Where, very easy to work.
Because that's the elephant in the room, with, at least the complaints were to get right. People, when people get permits, generally, the work is done kind of according to the way it's supposed to be done, whether they're putting their work on, or whatever. When they don't get a permit, that's where we have to cover this. So we're working on something?
We're working on, I said it three or four times, did people, one of those vendors, the price, and it takes the verification, you're ready for a quarter.
Correct. Any other, um, concerns?
So are we holding this for two weeks then, or what do we?
Well, we don't really have the changes for us, do we?
It's just email.
So, is it, what date, what date is that email that you have there? I mean, I have one, and it's the same one that I.
Eight-ten.
It's the same one that I had, good enough. Oh, I got one eight-six.
Eight-ten.
Okay, I, I never got an eight-ten.
The wrong, the wrong thing was sent out, and. It was. I had to. I sent it to.
And we.
There it is, there it is.
Yeah, and all that thought of it. And then it had to be corrected, because the wrong.
Yes.
Rachel and John, I'm just saying, for this version, Carl.
Zero.
As long as I see it for Monday, I mean, it can always, it can always be pulled.
Well, we actually did that, we, we had this.
It was a good catch, and this was the version, the stuff was changed.
This may, unfortunately, the thing was reverted back, there's some reason. Too many copies, or.
Yes, please.
Does it, everybody in the council want to be able to get that before? I did say right now.
Right now, that's what it sounds like, kind of, yeah. It was, it was an email on a chat, but it had this, that one, we're all on it, we're all on email, so it's not like it was only, only two of us. We're all on email.
No, no, I, I don't really care, I'm sending it, I'm sending it out right now.
All right, there you go.
There you go.
There you go. Don't shoot his lungs. All right.
Okay.
I guess I'm. Oh, I see, just over here.
Yeah. Okay, so, so what we're getting is not actually legislation, it's just, he wrote it in the body of the email, it's not an attachment. Got an attachment, and then he put it in the market.
And we have a time, uh, for the email that's. Tomorrow morning. Everyone, let's say, final word of each change, and the last revised copy, and that's in the regulation.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we good, um, moving into, we'll have those added back, send it in or report back to the original, and the last revised version. And we'll get a copy of it tomorrow.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, so, gentlemen, so back to Mr. Iggy's town, and I apologize if I missed it. So, there's really, we can't do anything, what action can we take with folks that already have their areas black tapped and didn't obtain permits, and whatever? Is there anything we can do about that? Mr. Mayor, or?
Could you win to executive session?
Talk about that, actually, that's a, that's a concern, that we're getting emails, at least a couple of times, you know, regarding the house and water, because of what folks have done, without issue, getting a permit, and doing it legally. I know a couple of houses in Woodland, they paved their front lawn, uh, with white top, they manned their grass, they paved their grass, uh, you know, trucking and trucking.
Um, I was, a woman, she just asked the other day, somebody brought me over to her house, and she, she wanted to pave her whole lawn, and I'm like, why didn't you walk last? That was my question, but anyway, she wanted to, but I explained to her, you just can't do that.
You have no part to cover.
Yeah. I don't know if she did it, but, she wanted a place where children could play.
All right, thank you.
I mean, is this, just a period of, I mean, a woman just have to remind, uh, remind herself that they need a permit in order to, uh, in order to.
Pay it in.
Regardless, it's.
On my house yesterday, there was twenty guys working, I'm exaggerating, there was at least six or eight workers working on it, like, Matt, it's all done.
On Sunday.
It's all done, on Sunday.
It was, because we don't work.
It was done yesterday.
You saw, you know where I'm talking about.
Yep.
They had a big pool on there.
You're changing for our restaurant, will we have, I believe, will we have somebody there tomorrow?
I, I can get somebody there, I can get somebody there.
I did my due diligence, yeah.
That's very good, very good.
All right, so.
Well, I will move it, provided that we get the, um, hydrogen in the form of the, um, the.
Can I have a motion?
So, hi, I've got motion that, um, moving, provided we get the legislation, the correct one, we get it.
Yes. Second. On the paper?
Aye.
Any other business for public safety?
Motion to future.
On the paper?
Aye.
Thank you.
However, the finance committee first item is a review of vacant property registration, if you had, are there any questions? I see none, home loan item number two.
That's okay. So how are we, um, okay, so how are we going to really identify the property? Just common people that are, how is this?
Typically, what happens is, uh, nothing happens unless it.
They'll talk to that?
No, until it goes to court, and then, uh, Carl is in the legal department, uh, works to put them on the vacant registration. I mean, honestly, if the property is taken care of, uh, there's generally not a issue, and that's really what it is. There, I think there are three hundred and twenty-nine properties, uh, on the vacant property registration form, only which are residential. So, um, this will hopefully get banks to move the process quicker, get things back into homeowners, and help everybody in the neighborhood.
All right, thank you.
Just, uh, I think you mentioned something, and we've been able to, uh, the eighty percent of these properties are.
Thank you. Right, just talk about that. Three hundred and twenty-nine properties, only twenty-five of which are residential.
Well, that portion, I deny residential, we're, we're L L C's.
L L C, banks, um.
You just want for a public hearing, sorry.
Yeah.
No.
They already have.
This is right. Have you, the legal legislation? Right.
I'm over.
Yeah, you don't need to move. Second item is amendment to the twenty-fifteen home consortium agreement, Ms. Walsh.
So the only change I have to come up here, please.
So the development department is, um, calling for an amendment, just to add this section underneath section one, part G. And it talks about how the program income can be recaptured and reused by the three municipalities, um, who are party to the contract. So without this, um, amendment, basically, what would happen with any income that was generated? Uh, it would be split, um, fifty percent Schenectady, forty percent Troy, and ten percent for Colony. Um, and that would be regardless of how much income each municipality itself generated. So we added in this subsection, um, which would kind of make things more fair, because it would say, it would, each municipality would keep its own program income or recaptured funds. So, if a municipality doesn't make any income, right now, it would still get ten percent of the other total income. So by adding this subsection, it breaks it down into forty, fifty, forty, ten of its own income. If that, does that make sense?
Are there any questions?
Second, please. Aye.
Thank you. Third item is bond ordinance with Mr. Carr.
He's passing the whole one on.
Passing the mic.
There you go.
Thank you.
I believe you all have the legislative request, um. There, ready?
Here we go.
There we go. Want to revisit that, I'll do it first, send you clerk's office.
Yeah, still a summer up over there. It's either over there or somewhere. All right, all right, that's. This is good news.
As you know, the city does have consent order, uh, and as part of the consent order, having, the city must construct a, a new pump station, Northberry Street pump station. It's part of the construction, the city is doing, also, some of our costs to the project, and the argument applied, we qualify to apply for some additional rent money. And this is through the, uh, WEA grant, it's through, uh, P and W or State Development Fund. And this request is to enter into, um, the request of bond ordinance from the amount of sixteen million dollars. The reason we do this is, we have to be committed for this project in order to apply for the grant. So we have to be committed to, to a bond eventually to favor this pump station. We're currently have three million dollars in those are money, sixteen million dollars, we would be eligible to apply for five million dollars for the H U A P through New York State D E C. And then, up to five million dollars through the WEA, which would be, I think, a twenty-five percent. Remaining five million dollars could be financed through the state developing fund at zero percent, and we leave the balance at market rate. The current market rate is running around one point six percent, one point seven eight percent, with state developing fund through E F C, uh, which could save us, conserve on one. But we, we do, because we do have some grant money for the other part of the project, we're sure, we are knowledgeable. But the application closes by September seventh, so that was why, and for this, so it would be today, where you, in the biz, we have to have this ordinance, this resolution done, to submit, to show that we are committed, go forward with this project, which we consent order.
We're gonna be putting this in a restricted, uh, fund, uh, since we're bonding sixteen, but we only need one. So assuming we get the grant money, put that in there, paid off, and then only have one million.
We're not gonna borrow the sixteen.
Well, he just said we need to.
We have to show the commitment, that, if we're applying for five million dollar grant, we only got four point nine, might have to borrow one point one, and again, that is the estimate on the project. If it came in at fifteen-five, all these numbers would be available, that if it comes in at sixteen-five, then we'd have to make up, uh, the difference. Believe the sixteen is the overall umbrella number, and it's asking for a commitment to the council in a resolution tonight. But we wouldn't actually do the bonding until we have, uh, gone out to bed, have the final numbers in place, in order, uh, be able to say exactly what would be allocated, either through grants, zero percent financing, or other incentives, on what actually the city would be responsible for.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Carr.
And with this, I assume this, that it would not have to come before the council again, because we have to put a lot of some.
It's gonna have to come back for the actual funding.
The actual, okay, good.
Other questions?
What, what it comes back, it also might be packaged in a capital project at the end of the year, so this would be included. We needed nine hundred thousand, we needed a million, or whatever it is, and get amongst the other borrowing, the council do, when we do the capital projects.
So again, we're moving forward now, does the archaeological, or archaeological finding, uh?
There was no, we got findings at phase two.
Okay.
Moving forward, so we did submit a amended, um, schedule, uh, and cost, which is the second possibility for the project.
Time table, spring of nineteen, or?
Hopefully, I'll define, like, January, constructing, uh, the, 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 the final design of the pump station, if that's a bit.
Exciting, I know, St. Kate neighborhood would be very, very excited as well, so, very good, good work, everybody here on this.
I have a motion.
So what was that? On the paper?
Aye. You have a question, Jerry?
I will, in a second.
Second.
I'll, thank you.
Hold up, uh, city planning, development planning, and the first item on the agenda is, um, mayor and his appointments for the D S A B.
Through recommendations, I'm submitting to council that it's going through the D S I C, uh, recruitment, approval process internally. Something confused for the last number of years, they have been charred recommendations. Submitting those, my equitable, as a, to favorable consideration.
Questions?
He's actually come from G N C, please.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
What? Oh, I, no, no.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, okay, and the next is the, um, mill lane review. Okay, this is it?
Okay.
Alright. So, um, the rest of the agenda, I mean, uh, city development and planning and planes is, um, this is all negotiations and contracts, so that we need to move into executive session. So I'd like to...
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Can you, whereas, you guys mentioned something else I thought about in regards to, uh, dealing with the meeting. Are, is it, you have been discussing this in the session as well?
I don't know, litigation, financial property.